Please, call roll, the, uh, call to order, the Oregon City Commission meeting for Wednesday, April 6th, 2016. If you'll stand and join me in the flight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have ceremonies and proclamations. There are two proclamations. As normal, I'm not going to read them. But there's a proclamation declaring May 1st through 7th, 2016 as Construction Industry Safety Week, and a proclamation declaring April 9th, 2016 as Arbor Day in Oregon City. Those are available on the website if you so choose to go read those. So now we're at Citizen Comment. Do we have anybody on Citizen Comment tonight? If there's anybody in the audience wishing to comment, now would be the time to do so. Then we'll move on. Everybody okay with the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, so under General Business, we have 16-203, the second reading of ordinance 16-1003 for Historic Properties LLC Planning Files, EC 1503, Zone Change, and PZ 15-01 Comprehensive Plan Amendment for property located near Beaver Creek Road, Highway 213 in Maple Lane.
Thank you, Mayor, evening Commissioners. So we did bring this before you, last meeting for the first reading. We are recommending that the Commission approve the second reading for it in number 16-1003. Prior to doing that, the city attorney, we did receive an email late this afternoon that he'd like to update you on.
So if you recall, at the last hearing, there was a bias allegation that was brought in and under our city code. That can be made at any time up until the decision. There was additional information that was submitted this evening, in particular, two things. Apparently, there's an affidavit from, what is the name, Richard Wilhelmie, if I'm pronouncing it right, essentially asserting that on the March 2nd, 2016 hearing, when the, the bias, when Mr. Nocita began his bias allegation, the video cut off and was replaced with something else and came back on. And he indicated that was an additional evidence of bias. And he requested again that, that the Commission recuse itself and appoint an independent hearings official to consider this matter. This material's also been submitted to the applicant who's indicated he has no objection to the material coming in. But I would continue to advise you that what has been alleged doesn't appear to consist of bias, but these materials will be included in the record. So with that, I would recommend that you proceed with, with your decision on the second reading.
Motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Mengeleberg, second by Commissioner Smith. Is there any discussion?
Nope.
Call roll.
Oh, we'll get the reading.
Sorry.
Ordinance number 16-1003, ordinance of the City of Oregon City amending the comprehensive plan and, plan map entitled 17, zoning chapter 17.06.020, the official zoning map of the Oregon City Municipal Code, by changing designations of the following properties, Clackamas County Map 2, 3-2E-04C, Tax Lot 700, 702, 900, 1201, 1400, from the MR Medium City Residential Conference Plan Designation to MUC Mixed Use Corridor Conference Plan Designation, and from the R-3.5 Dwelling District Zoning Designation to the MUC 2 Mixed Use Corridor District Zoning Designation. Clackamas County Map 3-2E-04C, Tax Lot 1300, and 3-2E-0-04CD, Tax Lot 6,000, from the LR Low Density Residential Conference Plan Designation to the MUC Mixed Use Corridor Conference Plan Designation, from the R6 Single Family Dwelling District Zoning Designation to the MUC-2 Mixed Use Corridor District Zoning Designation, and Clackamas County Map 3-2E-04C, Tax Lot 1500, 1600, and 3-2E-04CD, Tax Lot 3,300, 5,900, 6,000, from the LR Low Density Residential Conference Plan Designation to the MUC Mixed Use Corridor Conference Plan Designation, and from the R10 Single Family Dwelling District Zoning Designation to the MUC 2 Mixed Use Corridor District Zoning Designation.
What is procedural order if I may, just a matter of my next speech.
Okay. But let's stand by one second. Sorry. Apparently, there's a technical difficulty with our monitor. I was, wanted to make sure that we were actually recording and transmitting out. Ms. Nocita?
Just as a brief procedural matter, Mr. Kabeizman, last time you had the Commission actually take a vote on admitting the additional materials, and you didn't tonight, and I was just wondering what, what the difference was.
Um, I think the, the main difference was the, the uncertainty about the zoning code provision about whether this material could come in this late in, in the proceeding, since the City Commission voted to allow the last piece in on the idea that these procedural objections can be made up until the time of decision, that this would follow in the same.
So in a sense, because you're assuming that the Commission treats this, this in the same manner, and therefore, the material is coming in, even, and you're assuming that it doesn't need a vote at this point to add the material submitted this evening?
Correct.
Okay, that's all I wanted to clarify. Thanks.
Okay. Further discussion? Call roll.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
It passes.
Where's my button? Did you guys get a button?
No.
Oh.
Whatever.
Apparently, the automatic voting thing isn't working either. So, moving on.
We have recorded the vote.
16-204, second reading of ordinance 16-1004 for Providence Willamette Falls Medical Center Planning Files, EC 15-04, Zone Change, PZ 15-02 Amendment to Comprehensive Plan, and CP 15-02 Master Plan Amendment. Mr. Conkle?
Thank you, Mayor, evening Commissioners. Providence Willamette Falls Medical Center is seeking to amend a previously approved concept master plan as well as the comp plan map and zoning map for two properties from low-density residential to mixed-use employment. The master plan amendment includes expanding the boundary approximately one acre, consolidating two medical office buildings into one, and reducing the square footage, amending the phasing plan by removing reference to Phase 3. The City Commission did vote to approve, 5-0, the first reading of ordinance number 16-1004. Staff recommends the Commission approve the second reading.
Move to approve the second reading of ordinance number 16-1004 for Providence Willamette Falls Medical Center Planning Files, ZC 15-04, Zone Change, PZ 15-02 Amendment to the Comprehensive Plan, and CP 15-02 Master Plan Amendment.
Second.
It's been moved to the second. Any discussion? Call roll.
Ordinance number 16-1004.
Oh, sorry. Forget that part.
City amended the comprehensive plan map entitled 17, zoning chapter 17.06.020, the official zoning map of the Oregon City Municipal Code by changing the properties identified as Clackamas County Map, 2-2E-32AB, Tax Lots 3,000, 3,100, from the LR Low Density Residential Conference Plan Designation to the MUE Mixed Use Employment Conference Plan.
Mr. Kabeizman?
Yeah.
Your mic?
Okay, sorry.
Okay, there you go.
Ordinance number 16-1004, an ordinance of the City of Oregon City amending the comprehensive plan map entitled 17, zoning chapter 17.06.020 of the official zoning map of the Oregon City Municipal Code by changing the properties identified as Clackamas County Map, 2-2E-32AB, Tax Lots 3,000, 3,100, from the LR Low Density Residential Conference Plan Designation to the MUE Mixed Use Employment Conference Plan Designation, the R6 Single Family Dwelling District Zoning Designation to the MUE Mixed Use Employment District Zoning Designation, and amending an approved master plan for the properties located Clackamas County Map, 2-2E-32AB, Tax Lots 1201, 1900, 2,000, 2,100, 2,200, 2,300, 2,400, 2,500, 2,800, 2,900, 3,000, 3,100, 3,900, 4,000, 4,100, 4,200, Clackamas County Map, 2-2E-32AA, Tax Lot 4,400, Clackamas County Map, 2-2E-32AC, Tax Lot 101, 201, 7,200.
Discussion? Call roll.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
That passes.
Yes.
Oh, there it is. So we're at PC 16-042, second reading of the ordinance number 15-1016, read adoption of the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan. Mr. Conkle?
Thank you, Mayor, evening Commissioners. At our last City Commission meeting, the City Commission approved ordinance number 15-1016, read adoption of the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan. Staff is recommending approval of the second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. Kabeizman?
Ordinance number 15-106, an ordinance read adopting the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan, amending the Oregon City Conference Plan and ancillary documents.
Discussion?
Did we have a motion?
Oh.
Move to approve, second reading ordinance number 15-1016.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Shaw, second by Commissioner Smith. Now, is there any further discussion? Call roll.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
That passes.
So, on the consent agenda, does anything, anybody want to pull anything off the consent agenda?
I did want to comment on one thing, and that was the grant request for Glen Oak Park. I looked at the master plan. It looks like a great project that would hit all of the high points for the things that Metro's looking for, and I wish the City great success in that effort.
Thank you. So I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Moved to the second. Any discussion? Call roll.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
That passes.
So we're on to communications. Mr. Manager?
Thank you. So we begin tonight with Mr. Lewis has two updates he'd like to provide the Commission.
So I'm going to give you, I'm going to read through a detailed report on the FAST Act, Fast Lane Grant Program Proposal. The, and Katie, this is the one that I had a couple of slides for. So the US Department of Transportation now says it's now soliciting applications for the fostering advancements in shipping and transportation for long-term achievement of national efficiencies. That's the Fast Lane acronym. The Fast Lane Program is a new program for fixed America's surface transportation. That's the FAST acronym. ACT to fund critical freight and highway projects across the county. The FAST Act authorizes 800 million in funding for the Fast Lane Program for fiscal year 2016.
So we're not going to get this on our monitors either?
No, you will.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll get to the, the graphics are just kind of some details about where the project in, in, in Oregon is at. So anyway, there's, ODOT has, is pursuing the I-205 project, and it's really a project about the Lavernathy Bridge. And so their idea is to request a $50,000 grant and find another 100, not a 50,000, a $50 million grant. Sorry. For 100, it's a 150 million dollar project. They want a $50 million grant, and the other 100 million they're looking for. Okay, so I guess in state terms, 100 million, you know, you might find that in some of your other, other funds. But, so the justification for this is, one, because the Columbia River Bridge crossing is no longer a project, I-205 corridor is much more of a freight necessity. So that's one reason. The other reason was the seismic retrofit of the existing bridge is critical. So those two reasons together help justify even further why they think the project is something that will be able to secure some of these, some of these new, new to us funds. So I thought I'd just talk a little bit about the project extent. The, the description is very general at this point, so this is the best interpretation I could make of the description that they provided. But on the north, what would be the north end of the bridge, the bridge really kind of sits more in an east or west, east and west direction. So on the northeast end, it's really kind of where that off-ramp lane drops away and go from three lanes to two. So that's one limit. I think it's pretty much just looking at the bridge, although in order to deal with that, they've got to also deal with the on and off ramp off of 205 there. So solutions would look beyond just the bridge itself into the on and off ramp. And then the next slide, Katie, if you could, it's just the other end of the bridge. And here again, the, we think the project extent is pretty much near the end of the bridge abutment. But in this case, they're talking about elimination of the on ramp. So if you're used to coming across the Oregon City Westland Bridge, heading north on Highway 43 and, and for a short period, or actually, that's Willamette, Willamette Drive, and then getting on 205 northbound, that ramp, part of the problem there is just some of the congestion and the merging that happens and the safety concerns associated with that. So they're talking about a project that would basically reconfigure that intersection near Willamette Drive and the I-205 off ramp and Willamette Falls Drive. I'm not exactly sure how all that would come together. I don't think they know yet, but that's part of the study area as well as the work that they're proposing for the bridge. So seems like a project that would be good for Oregon City. It would be Phase 1 of a project that would expand I would, I-205 between Oregon City and Stafford area. So seems to be, the folks that I've heard from seem supportive of the project. It's new, new funding. It's another source of funding. That funding program is scheduled to last through 2020, and it increases every year. So in 2016, it's 800 million. 2017, it's 850, goes up 50 million and gets to about a billion dollars in 2020. So those are allocations each year that would be available, not just to Oregon, but, you know, across the nation. So, pretty good program.
So question about the project. If they're expanding and adding additional lanes on the bridge, is there enough width to add additional lanes on either end of I-205?
There would need to be some widening just beyond that as well. So how they would do that, I think on the other end, it looks like, looked to me like there's enough room for that additional, at that place, it would be the third lane. But in order to accommodate the on and off ramps on 99E and at this location here as well, they're going to need more bridge width.
Okay. Thank you.
The other update I wanted to give you, and I thought it was timely. If you remember Dutch Brothers, we've had ongoing complaints about Dutch Brothers and their location at 10th and Main and the, the traffic backups that occur on 10th. And while I, I, I thought the last time we were in front of the City Commission, the owner was here, we, what we kind of heard was, look, we've got a, a business that's doing well in Oregon City. The solutions may not necessarily be, may not result in yet another problem. So let's kind of continue to work with them. They have acquired the property up at Taylor and Division and Malala and 7th, that, that intersection there. And they're scheduled for a grand opening this weekend, on Saturday. So the, the, the thinking is, whether it's flawed or not, you know, it's a little beyond the civil engineering here, and it's more into coffee science, I guess. But the question is, is will that location help with the problem that we have with the downhill traffic? And encourage folks to maybe, instead of making a left turn coming up the hill, to use that other location? That remains to be seen, but we wanted to work with that business and continue to recognize that they're investing in, in the community with good businesses. And, and so we want to see how that goes. There's also a development application through the River renewal for the lot at 10th and Main. We met with them in a pre-application meeting, and one of the requirements would be that when that building goes in, there would be requirement that they'd have a center median that would require that entrance and exit from that property to be a right-in, right-out only. And, and Dutch Brothers is aware of that. So regardless of whether that business proceeds, we think it will. If it, if it weren't to proceed it down at 10th and Main, if, and the business I'm talking about is this new development. If that proceeds, then we would have a solution, something that would help us with our quiet zone. It would add that median that would prohibit the, the left turn. And, but if it doesn't, then we do have another solution that I'm ready to pull the trigger on, I suppose, which would be something along the same lines. We wouldn't build a concrete median. We'd move, we'd use something, I don't know if many of you go out on South End Road, but at South End and 99E, there's kind of a, it's basically a high-plastic kind of median there, visible with cones. You could do something like that without a lot of construction activity. But I really kind of wanted to wait and just see how we're going. So I want to give you that update. If you've got any other questions. We get calls on it still pretty regularly, so I'm sure you do too. It's not that we're turning a blind eye to that, but I think the safety, the, the, it's not a speed, saved, high-impact kind of concern in my mind. It's more of an inconvenience. So continue to live with that.
Mr. Shaw?
So I've noticed that the new location, we have arrows coming in off of Malala.
Into their parking lot?
Yeah, the arrows are there, but it says exit only, and the entry is to the, on the side street. I'm trying to, I don't know how that is going to work Saturday.
No, there's one, it's configured sort of like a circle. So if you came in off of Division or off whatever that street is.
Right.
You come around, and then you make the little turn to get back into line. Now, if a car's coming downhill, they can also turn right into that in-going line.
But it says exit only. There's a sign there that actually says exit only.
It's not a city sign. It's one of their signs.
Yeah.
Right.
We can look at their signage, but my recollection is there is an exit only at that same driveway, which may make it a little confusing. But, so, you know, you're right. If you come in off the Division Street side, you can either kind of make a U-turn and get right through the drive-through window, or you can drive through and come out on Malala. So that's that exit piece.
It's like this. So there's the lane that goes into the drive-through, and then there's this other lane that's coming around to get into the drive-through. That's the one that's signed exit only.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it sounds like we need to look at that signage.
Yeah. And the other thing is, I've noticed there in front of the Oregon City Brewing on, is that 14th or?
Yep, 14th and Washington.
There's a little.
Medium?
Medium right there. That's just the width of the, of a double yellow line that I thought would work there in case, you know, if we want to pursue something there on, on 10th.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, it's just very small stuff, but it keeps people from, would do that and stuff. You know, I think we suggested that those tall cones at one time are the barriers and stuff, and it seems like I was, yes, I think I was told that, yeah, they run over them or something. But anyway, yeah, so that's all I got.
They've gotten better.
Okay.
But yeah, they still tend to, it's not.
Well, we wish them success, you know, so.
Mike, so that, that was all I wanted to do.
My question is, do you, if you're coming uphill on Malala Avenue, is there, is there, there's a median there that prevents people from turning left, right?
That's right.
Okay. Well, we'll see how it goes. Mr. Manager, anything else?
Yeah, just two more things. The, for the May work session, we're going to have a discussion about the affordable housing, the code requirements that we have in place and the options that we have available to increase housing opportunities and options in Oregon City, as well as we're hopefully going to have a discussion with some representatives from Clackamas County with their affordable housing staff members. So we're working on putting that together for the May work session. So just wanted to give you an update that we are putting that together as well as a discussion about the legislation that was passed and what those options may be to us. We're also looking at trying to identify potential projects to bring forward for the Commission to consider at that May work session for the existing grant that Metro has put out for affordable housing, looking at barriers within your zoning code. There's kind of five topics that we could look at. So we are trying to look forward and identify a couple of projects for the Commission to at least consider. The application pre-up for those grants would be, I think it's two days after the work session. So we will have to move quickly if we decide to move forward with that. But just wanted to give you an update on that.
I would suggest that we invite somebody from the home builders to come to that work session, just out of courtesy.
And the second update I wanted to provide was just that I think most of you, most of the Commissioners had the chance to visit and participate in the River Walk Open House that we had last Wednesday. There were over 725 people participated in that event from 3:00 to 8:00 o'clock. It was pretty, I thought it was, it went off very well. I received a lot of positive feedback. Pretty exciting to have the consultant team there. They're a very talented group. And some of the interactive events that we're able to do with the public will help us begin this process. So very excited about how that went, and look forward to additional community events as we start to plan those throughout the summer here coming up. So those are the updates that I have for tonight.
And the library update?
What?
Ms. Cole is on vacation, so we thought we'd.
She didn't send her assistant or anything?
It was a big, it was a big debate.
You're, you're doing the tour next week. You're going to see it firsthand.
So updates from the Commission. Mr. Shaw, got anything?
A little bit, and I just wanted to ask Tony, when we do the work session, have we ever done an inventory of housing in Oregon City to see, you know, what's affordable housing and what's not? And where are we now? And do we have enough affordable housing? And are we going to, you know, put resources in this, all this? I don't know. So I just wonder.
Where we're at?
Where are we at on types of housing or what our inventory is right now?
We're going back through the records. The last one I recall doing was in about 2002 as we were updating the comprehensive plan. So we're trying to go back, look at that information, see if we, if there's anything we can add to it. But we haven't done anything recently, so I'm trying to work with what we've had and try to put together a little bit clearer understanding of where we're at now.
Okay, good, thanks. So I attended the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association meeting, special meeting they had last Thursday night, and with John Lewis and Martin were there proposing the new revised Public Works Facility. So it's kind of moving along, and there's, there are still questions there, but I, I think there's progress, so. Then I went to CIC on Monday, and again, Mr. Lewis presented the Public Works Facility Plan again. And again, there was, you know, some questions and stuff, but, you know, I think it's still, it really, I think it's getting a little narrower controversy on it and stuff, so. Let's see, then did the River Walk thing, so that's what I got.
Mr. Smith?
Just attended the Willamette Falls event, and that's about it.
Okay. Mr. Mengeleberg?
I attended the Metro Council open, or the Metro Council meeting last week, which was really great. Also attended the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association, a meeting with Brian, and we heard some of the same things we've always heard, but I think that they appreciated all of the steps that the staff had taken to accommodate some of their issues. I also went to the Willamette Falls, Willamette Legacy Nonprofit Board Selection Meeting for four hours on Monday.
Did you pick a board?
We did.
Good.
We have 11 recommendations that the partnership would adopt with three open seats that the partnership group would need to determine, with a lot of debate and discussion around that. One was, we didn't want to be in the position of choosing a tribal representative. That's a complex issue, and they really should be picking their own representative. We also didn't want to get into bruising any feelings around sitting politicians, so we punted that to the partnership group to wrestle with.
This took four hours.
I think, I think the recommendation was that the partners group would send a representative.
Yes. You said that much more elegant than I did, yes. And then finally, they really wanted to have a more, a representative of a larger business from Oregon City. So they're going to be looking for some candidates to fill that slot. Other than that, it was a really diverse board with a lot of strength in fundraising, which is the mission for right now. Let's see.
I'm curious that you guys chose an even number.
No, the recommendation was 11, and then there's three additional.
So that's 14.
The partnership group can do with our recommendation what they will.
Okay.
She's being so polite to you.
You know, and I realize that the larger the group gets, the less. You know, and I realize that the larger the group gets, the less, the less of a challenge it is, but I'm always leery of even-numbered boards and not having a way to, you know, break a tie or something like that. So, it's just, just a thought.
Also attended the Oregon City Main Street Program Economic Restructuring Meeting on Tuesday. They had a very impressive young sophomore from the high school do a presentation of the survey results, which show a lot of increase in visitors and an increase in the visitor experience, which is really positive. The last time that this, they did the survey was two years ago. They are kicking off some of the details of the parking study, trying to determine some of the, the days and times of day and that kind of thing that they want to study. They're, made a really great case for a rare student, and they have a scope of work for that, so I'm sure we'll be hearing more about that to support their efforts. And finally, we'll probably be hearing more about a request to set aside some of our Urban Renewal Funds to develop better retail spaces in downtown. Some of the spaces are too big, they're not a warm shell, and there's a lot of thought around how an incentive could make a difference there and bring more unique retailers to the city, so.
So, as I want to do from time to time, you said rare, and I don't know what that means, so I'd like to explain acronyms.
I don't know if I could. They are graduate students, or at least they have a bachelor's degree, and it's kind of like a Vista program for rural communities. I mean, we kind of fall under the rural category, apparently, but it comes with the full support and organizational power of University of Oregon behind them. They have a nine-month term, but they work in the city full-time. The stipend that they're asked, that they would need to fund is about twenty-five thousand dollars for that, and they, they're amazing. I've had two rares work with us in Cambie, and they're just really talented people and would really help, I think, the Main Street Program go to the next level.
Okay.
So, we'll be hearing more about that. And then finally, I'd like to thank John and his team for doing a great job in finally paving Division Street by the hospital. It was a mess and a disaster for three days, but it looks great now, so.
So, since our last meeting, had the Willamette Falls Legacy Project Partners Meeting, had the Metro Council Meeting, so I was at DeMoot three times that week. Metro Council Meeting, I think, we thought were really well. C-4, and we had a Regional Wastewater Capacity Treatment Advisory Committee Meeting, which went okay, I guess. We're kind of waiting on next steps, and I think you and I have a meeting tomorrow to talk about where we're going to go from there. But they presented their findings, which with no surprise to us, said that the omni-processor, although they didn't completely dis, they didn't put it on the dead list, they put it on the, they call it a parking lot, John?
Reserved.
Reserved or whatever, but, you know, it was a way to say no without saying no. So, we will continue to advocate for the possibility of using the omni-processor for about forty-five million dollars less than building digesters, so.
Mayor, you know, one thing that I didn't really get to make, because it was three minutes, and I didn't, I lost my time and rehearsed that, but the point that really wanted to settle was, you know, the tri-city service district, the three cities of Oregon City, West Lynn and Gladstone, really, they don't have a digester need. We don't need solids handling capacity for those three cities. The need for digester capacity is because of.
The agreements with CCSD.
The others. And that's what I, I really kind of wanted to drive home, and I missed it, but I think it's important for, you know, the general public to recognize that.
Don't worry, Mr. Counselor Johnson may, has done a pretty good job of making that point on more than one occasion.
Okay.
Probably less politically correct than I would, which is hard to imagine. So, that's, that's about it for me. Been a light week this week, so moving forward, I guess, is there anything else from you guys?
Well, I want to thank everybody for coming tonight, but especially our gentleman back there, our scout, is that correct?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, and welcome this evening. Did you want to speak at all, or any questions for us tonight while you're here? All right, good, well, welcome.
And once again, thanks to all the staff. I know almost everybody was at the, at the Legacy Project thing down at the Abernathy Center. Thanks to Dan for, for hosting that for us. And just, you know, it's exciting to see something finally start to actually move forward that people can see and touch and feel, and, you know, because we're, I constantly get, what's, when's something going to start happening down there? And he's got to keep explaining to people that, you know, the wheels of government grind exceedingly slow, so we're doing the best we can to move that along as fast as we can. With that, unless there's something else, Chief Ben, you got anything to say? What have you guys been doing lately? Pick up your microphone.
What have we been doing lately?
Give us an update on the police department, the last, you know, month or so.
Thanks a lot, Mayor.
Talk to us about Martin Road.
I don't know.